Oh my God, I can't help it. Not the man.
Call the meetings order begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is typified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Otter, try to call in the roll please.
Mr. Thacker?
Here.
Ms. Wager?
Here.
Ms. Thees?
Here.
Mr. Norris?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Thompson?
Here.
Mr. Lautermil.
Here, thank you. Moving on, corrections to the journal of the preceding meetings. You have the September 6th, 2022 sunshine meeting minutes. Would please review those for accuracy and note any changes or additions that need be made. If the meeting minutes are correct as presented, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion on the floor to approve by Councilwoman Wilson, second by Councilman Thacker. Any questions or comments before vote? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Ms. Thees?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermil?
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Next you have before you the September 13th, 2022 meeting minutes. Again, please review for accuracy. Please state if there need to be any changes or corrections made to the September 13th, 2022 meeting minutes. If the minutes are correct as presented, I entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Wager, second by Councilman Norris. Any questions or comments before roll call vote? I ask for roll call vote please.
Mr. Thacker?
I have to abstain, I was absent at that meeting.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Ms. Thees?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermil?
Aye. Motion carries. We will now open this portion of our meeting up for public comment. I ask that those that wish to speak approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and also sign in with the paperwork provided at the podium. So with that, we will now offer public comments. Does anyone like to speak?
Get a caller in on it.
Calling in to speak.
He's not out there.
Ms. Miller? Did you? It's my understanding Pastor Dwayne Malone wanted to speak tonight. Have you received correspondence that he would not be here?
No.
Okay. It does appear he's here, so we'll move on. Communications from elected officials, other officials, or agencies of the county. Does anyone like to speak at this time? Anyone on the council like to speak at this time? Councilman Thompson?
To, I guess, update the council. Last week, I know the Highway Department was in here concerned about a 4% raise. Upset about the 2.5%, understandably. I did meet with them last week, had some discussions with them. I hope they learned a quarter from me what I learned from them, I learned quite a bit. After explaining my purpose of going out there initially was to tell them how we got to the 2.5%. I wasn't quite sure if they understood that, I know a lot of people don't understand that. The reason why, we had, as a budget committee, I think 17, 18 meetings. That 2.5% wasn't anything that was pulled out of a hat. It was something that there was a lot of discussion with, a lot of discussion on. And unfortunately, the reasons why we came to that 2.5%, all those reasons still exist. We've got insurance that I think increased $990,000, whatever it was. We're still waiting on the Baker-Tilly study. And one of the big things was the 17 employees that we had to turn down because we just don't know what the Baker-Tilly study was. Out of those 17 employees, the one that concerns me a lot is the 11 new jailers. Until they get into the new jail, we don't know if we're going to have to increase that staff or not. The 17 new employees was $1.5 million. I think is what their salary is going to be, or what it was going to be a cost to the county. The 11 new jailers, I don't know exactly what that amount is. But anyhow, in discussing things with the Highway Department, I don't know. I mean, I'm sure they will have an opportunity to speak at some point, but came up, I was just throwing stuff out there to see what we could do for them. Benefit wise, one of the things was maybe additional personal day. I don't know if it works or not, if it's even an option. One of the things that was brought up with them was possibly a clothing allowance. And what I learned from the Highway Department was stuff that I didn't know before. I think they pay for their CDL, which I think there's still maybe, I don't understand exactly how much that was. I've heard a couple of different dollar amounts, and you guys told me what that dollar amount was, but I didn't write it down. They pay to renew their CDL, they pay for their tools, they pay for their clothing as well. And I think one of the gentlemen told me that, you know, their shirts are, they're working on a road crew, they get tar on them, they might have to buy one every other week. And then somebody said that, you know, they go home and they throw it in the washer, they might have to buy a new washer because they ruined it as well. So I think that the clothing allowance, at least what I left there, that was a viable option. I don't know if it still is as well. I know they want, you know, when I look at the Highway Department, 2 o'clock in the summer, 2 o'clock in the morning in the summer, when you have a thunderstorm, we rely on those people, and this part that I already knew is, you know, we rely on these people to clear the streets for us. In the summer, or in the winter, the same way, we have a snowstorm, we expect them to clean our roads so our family can make it to work or school safely. So that was all stuff that I knew. The things that I did learn from them was the fact that, you know, one of the gentlemen told me that, do you have to pay to work at your job? And then when he said that and started naming the amount of things that they have to pay for, I think that is something that I left there with. So I don't know the direction that this conversation is going to go, and I don't even know if that's still an option for them, or if they have decided against it now. But I know when I left there, that was kind of one of the impressions that I was under. Maybe a, some kind of clothing allowance in the future.
Thank you. Councilwoman Thees?
I had addressed them as well, and kind of talking about it, it was eye opening to learn that. And, you know, they do get some allotments, but it does not come close to some of the expenses and things that they have to meet for that. And I, you know, I hate to see that, and their job is one where we have to have safety and, you know, and definitely a lot of things that go with it. Also, in talking to people, I think, you know, both are important. And I know that's hard with the budget, and having been on the Budget Committee, I think, you know, if anything, you know, if we do look at salary increases or supplies in the future, or training, it sounds like the CDL licensing process has changed a little bit, especially even cost wise, especially for new people. I think these are, at a minimum, at a minimum, we, things we're going to have to look at for the Highway Department in the 2024 budgets to make sure that we have materials, training, things that they need to do their job safely. And those are things that we can work into things, we just need to be aware of it. And, and having conversations, it's always, and I was kind of talking to them, I'm kind of like this myself. You want to be proud of what you do, and you don't want to sound like you're complaining about your job, but at the same time, sometimes you have to explain to people what you're going through so that you understand what the needs are. And, you know, hearing this for really the first time, you know, I've only been here a couple of years, but even, you know, talking to Councilman Thompson, I mean, these were kind of eye opening things that we needed to know about. So never hesitate, you know, to kind of reach out and let us know that, for sure. Especially if it's things for training and supplies and those types of things. I mean, those are things we look at. So I don't know where the conversation is going to go either. I know last year, one of the big things I was concerned about were stipends and, you know, allotments and things like that, they don't, they don't go into salaries, and that's always a concern to me. You know, salaries that you can count on from year to year to year are always a good thing. But we'll just kind of see where we can go and also learn what we're even able to do since the budget had been approved.
Councilwoman Wilson?
I guess it's the Budget Committee that's talking right now, but I totally agree with Marie and with, excuse me, Councilwoman.
You can call me whatever.
Councilwoman Thompson. I am, I do want to say that I'm a little bit disappointed too, that we are just now hearing about a lot of these things. We should have been made aware of these during the budget process. And I'm very happy that we do know about them now, and I am in agreement that we do need to give them a, an allowance, clothing allowance or something at some point to make up for that. Because, like you said, I don't think any other departments have to pay so much out of their own pocket to just do their job, so.
Councilman Thacker?
Yeah, so I'm, I, hearing about some of these things makes me think of that we rely on a lot of our information, which you guys have a great department head with Larry Robinson. And so I, I didn't know about the CDLs, I didn't know about how the clothing allowance works. I personally, and I have a lot of respect for the ones who spent the time that served on the Budget Committee this year. There's a lot of work goes into it, I experienced it last year. And then when we get here, sometimes even though we make recommendations, they don't always go through. I think, I have a little different perspective on it. I would rather see us, instead of doing something for a clothing allowance for one department, I would rather look at a raise for the all employees of the county. That's my personal take on it. So I'm not necessarily, if we're, the whole idea is, when we thought we had started the Baker-Tilly study in time to get that information to the Budget Committee, which they are frustrated because they don't have that, then they would be able to say, hey, this department needs this, and this department needs this, and so we're, the first I was made aware was the Clerk's Office, as the one that would, we were having issues with the Clerk's Office. And I wanted to see us get more money for them because we were having a lot of people leaving. So I was hoping that we were going to be able to address all these issues. And I think that's what Councilman Wilson was talking about, is if we don't know about it, we can't fix it. And if we know about it now, I personally, I wasn't here when they had the vote, and, and I own that. For the, that's the one I just said that I abstained on the minutes because I wasn't here. Even though I understand and appreciate the effort that they went through, I'm not in favor of a 2.5%. I don't think, in this economy, where we have this high of inflation, a 2.5%, and we see what the city is doing, and we compare, we always compare what the county highway workers are making compared to the city, right? So we're looking at, only thing we can do is a fair raise is one that's based on percentage, unless we know the details of each of those departments, their wants and needs that from their department heads. So if you hear me talk about tonight, or whatever we, what comes out of this is, I am in favor of getting a bigger raise across the board for all the county. I understand what the Budget Committee and respect what they came up with because they're looking at the Baker-Tilly study that says in 2025, we're going to be down to, that 21 million is going to drop to 7 million. But whenever they brought us up that study, Baker-Tilly, they didn't factor in. They're looking five years out, but they didn't factor anything from a casino. So I thought that was a flawed study and it's, and it's on the face. So I think we have the money now, we can do what the people need now. People working right now need a raise, in my opinion. So that's where I'm at.
Councilman Norris? You got anything?
No.
Councilwoman Wilson?
I was just going to say, I mean, it seems, I agree that we need to do what we can for the employees. I fully believe that. I just really believe that we need to wait and see where Baker-Tilly is coming back. None of us have a crystal ball. You know, they may come back and say, we need a 10% increase. They may come back and say, you know what, you're pretty much, you're pretty close to where you need to be. Maybe a 3%. We actually voted down 3% last month.
That's okay.
So it's, it's, I hate it that we're waiting on Baker-Tilly. I really feel like if we'd had WIS, we would have had the results back now. I'm almost of the opinion that we could commission WIS right now and get the results back faster than Baker-Tilly. With that, they're here and there, I guess.
So I, I too met with the men and women at both garages. I was up north on Wednesday morning, and we had a very healthy conversation. And I went down south Thursday morning, and it was a very good conversation as well. A lot of what was mentioned already was, was brought to light for me as well. I think there's, I think there's a multitude of issues here, and kind of what I expressed to, to you all last week was that I think you have bigger fish to fry than just that percentage increase. I mean, we've heard about the clothing allowance and some of the things you had to deal with clothing. You know, how you had to go about getting boots. You have mechanics in the shop with $40,000 and $50,000 worth of tools, and, and they provide a tool allowance out of their, their family budget each week to buy certain tools to be able to do the job for the county. You know, I was, I guess, ashamed to learn for the first time that across the board, people in County Highway are making $2 less an hour than those at City Street Department. That's, you know, that's, that's bad. Especially when I hear an occasion where they lost three employees in one swoop because they left County Highway, worked for City Street Department. You know, they're in a similar situation, just like everybody else. It's hard to get people that want to come to work, and they're behind the eight ball too. As we've heard discussion about the CDL, there's been a change in legislature where they had to take a three week course, and the cost of that course now is anywhere from $4,500 to $6,000. And they're asked to pay for that cost, which I think we need to step up as a county and figure out how we can help that. I think we need to, to look at footing that bill as county government to get people in with CDLs, because at some point, that well is going to run dry. I think what we need to do is look at maybe set up some type of program to where they stay for X number of years, sign a contract, and if they leave before that contract is up, then they have to reimburse the county for, for whatever that looks like. Maybe it's a five year contract, and each year is 20% off. I don't know, but hopefully, if, if our people in County Highway train these people, they get the CDL, they're around for three, four, five years, they're going to stick around, work with these guys because they're going to like them and feel like it's a family. So I think that's one way to try to get people in the door. Otherwise, we're not going to get them here. I mean, I can't imagine anybody wanting to come off the street, not have a CDL, and it's required the job, and you're asked to foot the bill of $4,500 in a three week course, and not get support from the county government to get there. You know, I agree with the clothing allowance, and there should probably be for mechanics, some type of tool allowance, whatever that looks like, I don't know, but those are, are things that should be considered. You know, and I, I learned for the first time, I know they get paid when they're called out. You know, we, we like to get up in the mornings and go to work and have the roads plowed and all that, and we're happy when they do, and they're out doing that work overnight when we're sleeping in warm beds. But these guys sit by the phone, and they wait for that call, and they're not getting anything for that, being tied to that phone. You know, I talked to guys saying they would have liked to gone out of town, see family, or they'd like to maybe gone to dinner and had a few drinks, and they can't do that because they're waiting on the phone call to go plow snow, or maybe even go cut down a tree that's blocking roadway from a storm. So I think, you know, maybe not a monetary benefit, but maybe extra personal days or something like that is oftentimes what happens if you're on call for X number of days or hours a month during a year. So I think there's a multitude of things that have probably been overlooked over the years. You know, we keep talking about Baker-Tilly and, and the shortcomings there thus far. I think we would all have angst with what's going on. I think it's really holding up a lot of things that we would like to do. And I think we, as a council, need to ask ourselves if we want to continue to allow that to happen, or if we want to move forward without them. I am not convinced that we're going to be happy with the product once we get it back, quite frankly. I mean, we were given deadlines that they were supposed to meet, and each time they missed the deadline, and we're told for one reason or another why they can't make the deadline. Many times, it doesn't seem to be their fault, from what I'm hearing. I, I know that's, I know county employees wanted something different. I understand the angst of the WIS study, and the rollout especially. But it may have been the more appropriate thing had we done the periodic reviews like we should have done every two or three years. We may be in a better place than what we are right now, who knows? And Baker-Tilly may come back, and it may be a great thing, but I don't feel good about that right now, and I'm not confident that it will be, based upon where we're at. With all that said, I appreciate the time that the men and women of Highway Department spent with me on Wednesday and Thursday last week. It was very productive, and I learned a lot. I think we learned a lot about each other, and it was, it was good stuff. And I know Councilman Thompson went to at least one of the garages last week as well, and I know it was productive for him as well. So again, thank you for that, and, and we're going to have to work to do better, certainly.
Councilwoman Thees?
Along the line of Baker-Tilly, I would like to request, and I don't know if this is possible or how to go about it, but just as we received updates when the jail was being built about what they were working on for the week, and this is what got done, these are the next steps, et cetera, et cetera. I think we are well to the point that we should be able to request what, where, where is it's having issues. And because they are working for us, we are paying them to do this job, and I think we should be able to see where the holdup is. We don't even know at this point, like, how long. And that's, that's the frustrating part of it, because when we started the Budget Committee in, in June and meeting, we kept going, oh, maybe it'll be done next month, maybe it'll be done next, we're in October. And I still don't know when it, when it's coming. So to have, I don't think it's out of line to request that they give us updates on the progress and where the holdup is, or what's going on. You know, we signed the contract with them, so I'm assuming that would come from the council. But I think it's something we need to request, just to hold them accountable. And I think we're all, including employees, are a little antsy about it. So I think it's, it's a reasonable, when someone's working for us, it's a reasonable thing to request updates. And timely updates, even if it's biweekly, I mean, that's better than what we're getting. So if they don't want to do it weekly, I could deal with biweekly, or even before council meeting, like before sunshine meeting or before council meeting, just so we have something. Because at this point, we don't even have anything.
I agree.
Yes, I agree.
So does that come from us, then, since they, we signed the contract with them?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would say that Kalissa has communicated time and again, certain things she wants to help her and Kara get to where they need to be, work with the department heads and elected officials. It's my understanding, you, Kalissa communicated with them last Monday, and still has not received any response back, so.
If we can on that, if we could dovetail on that, when she does do a request, if she CCs all of us, that way, you know, I think that would be appropriate, and that way, if they do reply, we, we see it. And we see that, we at least know, and like, I appreciate that you're telling us that, but that way, we would know then that, hey, we hit them up, Kalissa hit them up for your, for your request, and then they haven't done anything.
And maybe they'll respond when they're.
If they see, I, I had, I've had better luck when I CC more people on emails to get my way.
We'll keep that in mind.
Yeah, so if you get an email with a CC on it, no, that's fine. You know, I think we worked with, when I was trustee on health and welfare and pension funds, we had consultants just like Baker-Tilly. And at some point, we have to own it, the seven of us, we have to make a decision whether Baker-Tilly's got us information or not. You know, it's, it's, we can only blame them so much, then it's us.
Anyone else? Councilman Norris?
President Lautermil, can we reach out to WIS and see what it would cost? In curiosity, to see what kind of timeframe and cost they would have to, to update their information.
Do we, Kalissa, do we already have? We'll wait till they finish. Do we already have that information from WIS?
We have the proposal that they provided us, was it maybe October, November of last year?
Okay.
Whenever we were looking at.
We maybe, we maybe get that refreshed and see what the timetable will look like and the costs associated with that as well? Do we, Kalissa, in your most recent communications, do we have some type of timetable, when to expect us back from Baker-Tilly? Are they still working on it?
No, like I said, I provided them the responses to all of the questions they had earlier this last Monday, and I have not heard anything from either one of them, which there's two people there that normally correspond, and one of them more so than the other. But they've not even acknowledged that they received it, they've, there's been no response, no expectation of when we may receive it.
Could you, could you maybe follow it up tomorrow, include Kara and the council in that communication to see what the status is, if you don't mind?
I can do that.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wilson?
It's unacceptable. I mean, it's, it's beyond frustrating, and it's unacceptable. And for us to just say, well, we should just proceed without it, we've paid for this study. We should not go proceed without it. But it's, we should demand that we get some answers for what's the holdup? Why is it taking so long? This is, it's beyond ridiculous. And I, like I said, we don't have a crystal ball. They are supposedly the experts, they're supposed to be getting us this information. are supposed to be getting us this information, we cannot proceed without it.
Thank you. Anyone else from council have any comments they'd like to make about this topic or any So with that, I'll close communications from elected officials, other officials and agencies in county. I'm going to jump back a little bit to public comment to open it up for Pastor Dwayne Malone, who was down to offer some information about a project that he's a part of.
I first want to apologize for our timing, I thought the meeting started at 5:30, but we're here, so again. But again, good evening, President Lauterma, Vigo County Council members and members of our community. My name is Dwayne Malone, and I am the pastor of the First Free Will Baptist Church here in Terre Haute, Indiana. I'm also the coordinator of the 13th Street Corridor Project and a lifetime resident of Vigo County. I'm here today in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus the Christ, to remind us of the plans and purpose for the 13th Street Corridor, which was mentioned in our Vigo County Government's 25-year comprehensive plan for growth and progress in our county. Our mission for the corridor project is to create a healthy, vibrant, sustainable neighborhoods existing in and around our targeted boundaries. These boundaries of the corridor consist of, number one, Poplar de Voorhees from 10th Street to 17th Street on the south side, on the north side, from Walbash to Locust from 25th Street to 13th Street, and from Locust to Maple, 25th Street to 13th Street. Historically, these neighborhoods have been overlooked, creating a negative economic impact and public health crisis in these communities. The corridor plans for these neighborhoods consist of quality, affordable housing, commercial and recreational outlets, health and wellness, education, light manufacturing, entertainment, and technology outlets, eliminating the economic and healthcare disparities in these neighborhoods We have three immediate financial needs requesting the use of the American Rescue Plan to change the quality of life for individuals and families. We need a feasibility study to show the benefits of these plans for neighborhoods in the future. This study could cost up to fifty thousand dollars for this plan of action. We seek 1.2 million dollars to create 10 quality, affordable housing units in these neighborhoods. I also have here with me tonight my dad, Cletus Malone, who owns Jonah Inc., and he will tell us a little more about these housing opportunities. For many living in these neighborhoods experience a food desert daily. We are blessed to have a convenience store in the name of TC West in the community, but there is a need to expand their operations to provide more healthy nutritional foods and other products for citizens living on the south side corridor in the amount of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We have more shovel-ready projects to be completed in the next 12 to 15 years in the estimated cost of a hundred and thirty million dollars. This vision will help bring blight to light, creating hope and opportunities for our citizens, strengthening our entire city and county communities. I now bring up to you Cletus Malone of Jonah Inc. and Archie Smith of TC West, who will follow, and I would love to answer questions when they're done if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Malone. Joy to be here this afternoon or this evening with you, and looking around and see so many people in the house tonight. We're talking about homelessness and individuals don't have decent places to live, and well, we got the brains here, so I'm actually looking at, what are we going to do? Jonah has been in business since 1997. We started building homes in 1997, and so far, we have up to 40 units that we've been able to build for low-income families. We have a lot of people out there that are seeking places to live. Every day, I get anywhere from three to four phone calls of individuals looking for some place to stay. It's tough right now, especially since school's out, school's back in session, and the parents are looking for places to house their kids and keep them after school and things like that that's going on, and we have a lot of responsibility in this community. I've been, I've been in the school system for 32 and a half years. I taught science at Chongji Rose, I was a director's counselor, and Woodrow Wilson, Honey Creek, and Terre Haute South, so I'm not new to the game. I've been around for quite a while, and I'm looking at those of you that are here tonight, I hope to see some enthusiasm in your voices, in your faces, your smiles, or whatever you might have to gather tonight and pass on to the community itself as a whole. Now, we've done a lot of work in the past, and we still have a long way to go, but I know that through the efforts of the community, working together as a whole, we can get the job done. Now, as far as pastor, yep, I passed the Second Missionary Baptist Church for 32 years, so I've been involved in all ends of the scope, from the taking in young kids to housing individuals that need help, giving up places for individuals to live and to work. The last place that we gave up was the Youth Intervention Center, and Reach was supposed to take in and start housing individuals that are looking for someplace to go, and as of yet, I don't see that's operational. So I know we've had a lot of things been going on, there's a lot of talk, but very little action. Now, like I said, you know, hey, when I get to be almost 80 years old, I've had a lot of talking going on, so it's time for a little action going on, and some of us in here that are kind of short on top, you know, we have a lot of responsibility. You have responsibility to your kids, your grandkids, your great-grandkids, and so I think it's important that we reach out as a community as a whole to work together that we can to pull these projects together. There's no reason to say that we can't do it, because, as I know, when I was coming up, there was no such word as "I can't" in my vocabulary, because my mom would not allow that. So I'm telling you now, there is something that we can do as a group, as a unit, if you have to do it individually, well, hey, let's do it together. You know, I'm available, let's sit down and talk about some of the things that we can do as a whole, so. Oh, okay. I thought you were going to pull my coat tail. But, you know, I'm serious about this, this is something that we need to look forward to, and I have talked with the mayor several times, I've been in his office, I've had my feet under his desk, and we've talked about some things that we need to get done, some things that we should do, and some projects that we have in the works, and I look at all of you here tonight, and I know that there's going to be some enthusiasm that's going to come out of this meeting tonight, that's going to generate some enthusiasm, some unity, some togetherness as we go forth from here. Now, I don't know about some of you, I don't know how, what your background has been and what you've been involved in, or what you have not done, or you, what we're doing, or what you have not done, I don't know, but that's not important now. What's important now is that we take it from here, we take it from where we are now and move forward. We got some ideas coming along of helping other families get into these homeless situations, get them off of the parks, out of the parks, hanging out at the bus station, out at the Deming Park, some places like that, staying overnight. We need to get these folks out of the parks and into a decent home. Jonah's been doing this, and I don't know whether many of you know that we have several homes that are located throughout the city. If you haven't looked at some of our homes, you know, let me know, I'll take you. Like I said, we have a lot of work to do, and I'm looking forward to working with individuals, I'm working, looking forward to doing some things to help this community become more than what it can be and not what it used to be.
Can I respond to, can I just real quick? Can I, can I, sir?
Mr. Malone?
Mr. Malone, I want to, I want to address something that you said. First of all, I agree with you, my mother was the same way, her slogan was "Can't Never Did Anything," and that's, that's the way I believe too, and I'm involved with an organization called Chances and Services for Youth, have you heard with, heard about them? I'm thinking that at least for the children portion of it, maybe I can, I would like to meet with you and talk with you about maybe coordinating something together with them to take, help take care of the kids and the after-school programs and that kind of things that Chances offers.
Good evening, my name is Archie Smith, I am the, one of the owners of TC West Variety Store, we've been in business since 1994, and the purpose of me being here is I would like to let everybody know we've been hanging in there since then, and we kind of need financially have a little, something to help us to expand a little bit, not a whole lot, we'd probably the last of the little mom and pop grocery store. Now, what we did back in the past, we hired high school students part-time, college students part-time, to, you know, show them the business end of running the business and things like that. Even the little kids, when they come in, instead of throwing the money out, I make them count it out to me. Let's learn how to count money, you know, things like that, but anyway, I'm going to make it short and sweet. I'm trying to expand a little bit, and I'm going to need a little, we never asked for a whole lot of money in the course of 94 to now, we had a small business loan to get started, SBA or something like that, but as of now, and we hung through the tough parts, and it's even tougher, but our longevity of being there, and a lot of people, you know, they're right passing, look, oh, so this is where TC West is, yeah, I'm down the street from Charlie's, but anyway, I would like to financially see if I can expand, I'm not trying to have a mega store, I'm not trying to be Family Dollar, I just want to expand in the neighborhood that I am in and make it welcoming and warm. If you through that neighborhood, Fort Kings and Crawford, stop by and look at it, you'd be surprised, might look rough on the outside, the inside is very cozy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Councilman Wager?
Dwayne, I'm glad you're here, you said you were coming, and here you are, here I am, we're going to talk. You're right in, you're right in my district, so we're going to have to do something about it. I'll be there. Thank you.
Councilman Thies?
I just want to, and I have a feeling I know the answer to it, but Mr. Malone, have you talked with the city, you said, you know, your father had mentioned you've talked with the city, have you presented to the council there as well?
Yes, not as in this format, but everything that was mentioned tonight has been mentioned to the city council.
That's all, okay, thank you.
What was the outcome of that? That's why you're here?
Well, basically, I would really like for a partnership.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, the overall long goal for this 12- to 15-year plan, I know we have the American Plan now, the Rescue Act Plan, but this is going to be a budgetary thing from city and county government together over the span of 15 years, and really what that's boiling down to for us is about 1.5 million dollars from both entities to create this, and then we would move along with matching funds from the state and government and other entities to create this opportunity. So this, this rescue money is going to run out, you know, eventually it'll go, so this is a long haul, this is a long plan to create these things that are needed to establish a vibrant, healthy community.
Have you applied for grants or anything yet?
No, ma'am, we've done other projects, but we have not, I mean, this, this money was here, seems like we having some inroads as far as what we really need to do with this money. I heard, not Councilman, Commissioner Moore State, as far as, you know, this basically is our money, it's community money, and so we're just here today to present a plan, because, you know, without a vision, people perish, and so we're here with our vision and our plans to create better communities. And we can talk about that, Chances for Youth, whenever you want to.
Okay, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions from council? Councilman Thacker?
Yeah, I would reiterate, we like a plan.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what we want to see as well.
Just putting it forward.
Yeah, yeah, we're with you.
Thank you, I appreciate your time. Any other questions?
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Moving on, reports from committees, there are nine, resolutions and ordinances other than appropriations. First up, final reading binding units 2023, annual budgets and adoption. We had had this information last week, I know there are representatives in attendance tonight, if council has questions. See, first up on page four is solid waste management, and it's like Karen Nasser's here, anybody has questions for him? If not, that's fine, too.
Yeah, that is very, that is really nice, if you don't have any questions. I know what budgets are like, so, but I can answer any questions that you guys have. Main thing that I'd like to reiterate is that our revenue comes from host fees from Sycamore Ridge landfill, we are not property tax-based, we're basically just having to ask to be able to use our own money.
Thank you.
Your motion?
Just saying, you got this document too, it said this page four.
So I don't, I don't know if we need to go through this necessarily individually.
Yeah, I didn't know how you wanted to do it. Do we just do it all at once?
Unless there's some questions, I mean, we've reviewed this, we've had time to digest it, I know, as I said, I know there's people in attendance that are willing to answer any questions or any concerns that council has, I think they're just fine staying in the gallery, too, if that's all right, but I think we can probably address it as a whole, unless there's something that's a problem.
I like watching it live instead of on YouTube, so I like this.
One of our followers.
You may want to look at Lost Creek, because that was the Lost Creek Fire Protection District, that is one that we had some issues with, and they have made some adjustments. I believe the rest of them are, as was discussed earlier, correct, Cheryl?
Yeah. First of all, we can, he and I both had conversations with the department.
Lost Creek.
Where is it?
It's in, I played in this little land, don't. It's next to the last.
Should be.
Keep going. Next to the last.
Is there one clear on that, are there any questions? Are there any questions?
Just to clarify, you said that it is fundable for this year? Okay. That's what you.
Is everyone clear with that? Okay? Need to hear from Rick Long? You can get off the hook, Rick. I think you're good.
Just to clarify, I did speak to the representative of the UCF today. We got some resolutions to change the budget before the end year. So it will be full of budgetable life next year. The United Nation just got paid one resolution this year. So it's a budget here. Honestly, it's under control to approve the budget for next year. The budget will be.
Thank you. With that, is there any further discussion or a motion?
I'd make a motion, we accept the ordinance and resolutions proposed.
Binding.
Do I need to say for the binding? Okay, let me get back to my agenda here. Does there? First binding units.
Anything with Lost Creek?
For the record. We should let's speak one. I think you should at least make each of the terms.
Are you good with that?
Yeah, I'm ready. Let's, let's go with this. All right. And make a motion that we accept the fine, the budget estimates for the following binding units. The Vigo County Solid Waste Management District, the Terre Haute International Airport. Do we need to say the fund name?
No.
County Creek Fire Protection, Sugar Creek Fire Protection District, Carrington Fire Protection District, and Lost Creek Fire Protection District and Riley Fire Protection District.
Negotiation, negotiation.
Well, did I skip that one? I apologize.
Just read that one.
And the negotiation one, I had them out of order.
That's fine.
I apologize.
Second, and I second the motion.
So we have a motion on the floor to approve by Councilman Thacker and second by Councilwoman Wager for the binding units. Any questions or comments for vote? May I ask for roll call vote, please?
Okay. Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Ms. Thies?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Loudermilk?
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Next, we have the final reading Capitol Improvement Board 2023 annual budget. It's my understanding you showed the information before you. Requirement that the CIB provides an annual budget to the council. It's my understanding we can approve it, just review it or deny it? Is that correct?
Statute reads, board shall prepare a budget for each calendar year covering projected operating expenses, estimated income, and reasonable reserves. It shall submit the budget for review, approval, or rejection to the fiscal body of the council.
Offer this time for discussion. If there's any concerns, questions, or comments from council, please state so now.
I think a motion that we approve the Capitol Improvement Board annual budget for adoption.
Motion to approve by Councilwoman Wager?
Second.
Second by Councilman Norris. Any comments or questions? May I ask for roll call vote, please?
Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Ms. Thies?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Loudermilk?
Aye, motion carries, thank you. Moving on, we have ordinance adopting County of Vigo, Indiana's salary schedule and compensation policies, ROC 2022 dash four three. And, you know, last week during the meeting, when reviewing this, the highlights did not appear on our copies. However, we did go through those piece by piece. You should have in your packet today, highlights to where you can clearly see what the changes are. So open the floor now for discussion regarding this ordinance. I just assumed that was understood when we get to those. This is for general employees. Any comments from council?
Someone find their side of the building? Huh? Looked like somebody was crossing the sign. Mr. President?
Councilman Wager?
Well, I read through all of this ordinance. And I think, starting in January, I hope we all can make it. Well, groceries are as high as they are now and gas is as high as they are now. And I got a feeling it's not going to be cheaper when the new year starts. And I don't think two and a half percent is enough for anybody to live on. And I think the highway workers, you know, they work their fingers to the bone and all they get is bony fingers. And they need a 4% raise. And the clerk's office needs a 4% raise. And the recorder's office needs a 4% raise. And the treasurer's office, and the commissioner's office, and everybody needs a 4% raise. And I want to give all the county employees a 4% raise. So I'm going to make a motion that we give everybody a 4% raise because the food and beverage tax is bringing in money and the interest rates are going up like crazy. So I'm making a motion that we raise this to 4%. And that's all I got to say about that.
So is it a motion?
To amend.
To amend?
To amend.
The ordinance?
The ordinance.
Okay. So just so we're clear, amend the ordinance from?
Two and a half percent.
Percent raise?
Yes.
To 4% across the board?
Yes. And I know you all want to do it and I know you have, and I know that you're being prudent. I understand that, I do. But we have responsibility, these people who are trying to make ends meet. And, you know, not everybody makes $50,000. They don't make 60,000, 70,000, 80,000, $90,000. They're trying to keep their families going. They got daycare, you know, they got house payments. I mean, we all do. Two and a half percent, I mean, you have 7% inflation right now, you know? I mean, it's not, you know, the Democrats or the Republicans causing it. It's, it's the stinking oil companies are not pumping oil. It's the Putin not feeding gas. It's, you know, we're all in this same boat and we got to take care of each other. You know, I, I think we can do, I know we can do this. I know we can do it. And it's the right thing to do. That's the right thing to do. And I know you want to do it. I know you all want to do it. And I, I think we can do it. So I think we got to do it.
Anyone else like to speak?
Just like the second of motion.
So we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wager to amend the ordinance adopting County of Vigo, Indiana's salary schedule and compensation policies, ROC 2022 dash four three for the general employees two and a half to 4% increase for 2023. And second by Councilman Thacker. Councilman Wilson, you'd like to speak before vote?
Yes, because sitting on, having sat on the budget committee and we worked hard to come up with the budget that we came up with. We didn't, as Councilman Thompson said, we didn't just pull two and a half percent out of the air. We felt comfortable that this was an amount that we could live with at the moment with the insurance raising a million dollars, with Baker Tilly studying not back, with having to deny 19 employees, new employees that were asked for. I'm a little concerned about the timing of all this right now. Why was this not a bigger issue, issue before we adopted the budget? I understand.
It's been an issue.
I understand that. I'm talking about the council right now and the fact that there was not this kind of attention brought to it when we could have discussed it at the time of adopting the budget. And we have already adopted the budget and it's, I'm frustrated because I, I really feel, I feel for especially the highway department. I understand now all the different tools that they required to purchase out of their own pocket. So they're actually not getting as much of a raise because they're still having to purchase the product, the money out. They're having to pay for their tools. The stipend that, or the allowance, clothing allowance or whatever that Councilman Thompson brought up. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm just really frustrated. I'm going to end it right there, I'm not going to say anymore. That's just my opinion on it. And last month, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not going to end it right there. Last month, it was an issue brought up that we raised it to 3% and that was voted down. And now here we're going, we're saying, okay, 3% was voted down. We can't go 3%, let's go 4%. The, that increase between two and a half and 4% is $850,000. And we're already expenditures over revenue and inflation is what it is. And, excuse me? I was, I'm basing it on averages. The $850,000 is based on, on increasing the whole salary package for the whole county. The 800, that's where 850,000 comes in. That, that difference is, is across the board, all of the salaries. So I, I guess I'll be quiet now.
President Loudermilk?
Councilwoman Thies?
I just also want to have a point of clarification that if we do vote and this is voted down, then we cannot bring it up. Is that my understanding? Can it be brought up in the new year? In 2023? Just the salary. Appropriation, okay, just, just for a point of clarification. I, I sat in, obviously I was one of the people on the budget committee. And, you know, I do have the concerns that we have with where we're at, looking at the future amounts and some of the projections. We haven't gotten a lot of final numbers in. I think we had some conservative. We haven't gotten a lot of final numbers in. I think we had some conservative projections. But at the same time, you do want to worry about the future. You know, we always want to keep people with their jobs, have their jobs, and be successful in them, and we want to keep good employees here in the county. But I also think, in looking at this, and I tend to be very kind of in the middle on a lot of things. I'm not, you know, a huge spender. I'm not a huge saver. I try to look at the moment, but also while looking ahead. And I do have concern for this year specifically because this year is not your normal year. We've come off of a few not normal years with COVID and, and different things, and, you know, I, I think what I ask employees, if we do look at something differently this year, okay? That in the future, there might not be years where we can be, you know, bumping it up or doing different things, or once we get our study kind of leveling out. This is a year where we have some inflation going on and different issues, and some people still are hurting from coming off of COVID. So, you know, that's my biggest concern, is what are the expectations for the future? If we do, you know, change this, if we look forward? Because one of the things that, in working on the budget, that really kind of surprised me, and I think we can do a better job explaining this to our employees too, is the amount of insurance that we cover. And from my understanding, um, when looking at insurance, a majority of Vigo County employees do use our insurance plan. And having worked somewhere where we might get a certain raise, but the insurance actually goes up more than our raise, that, that hurts too. Um, and so I think have an awareness that as we go to the future, and I think we can bet, do a better job explaining what your package actually entails, as far as cost and things in the future, so that you can see it's, it's beyond just the salary and wages. It's actually the insurance as well. We can do a better job of that. And I, I think it's important that we do, but I also think it's important that we address the times that we're living in, with the understanding and support of employees realizing that this is not a typical year, and years like this in the future might not, you know, be the same, where if, after we pass something, you were to come to us and ask us to change it, we, we may not be able to. I think this is a really unique position, and there was a need for some employees in some areas, and, and that concerns me as well. But I also understand the issues of inflation, and just seeing it through the kids I work with every day, teachers who I work with who get very similar salaries to many of our county employees, in the situations our teachers are in, where some of them have two and three jobs. It's very concerning. So keeping that in mind, and asking the support and understanding of employees, I think will be very important as we move forward, and especially once hopefully we get this update that we are just begging for. I had asked for a 3% raise, um, and that concerns me because, you know, we, granted we weren't all here, and maybe we didn't have feedback from a lot of you prior to that. I knew that, that you guys were gonna be disappointed with what was kind of settled on, and I'm sorry for going long. Uh, but I do think it's important that if we look at this, we look at it very cautiously as a temporary situation to deal with inflation. Inflation eventually ends.
Yep.
Councilwoman Lautermaut? Councilwoman Wilson?
I have one more point. I do care about the employees. I don't want that to be misunderstood. Do not get that twisted. I do care about the employees, but you also are taxpayers. And I have to consider the taxpayers in all this too, because there is no free money from the government, that, that, all of the money, all of the people that are paid are paid by the taxpayers. And the, there are taxpayers out there that are saying, I didn't get a 2% raise in my salary. I didn't get a 4% raise in my salary, but I'm expected to put the bill through taxes for all these, all these people to get a raise. So we have to, we have a really delicate balance that we have to walk, or we have to maintain, and that is, we've got, we cannot, we can't tax ourselves into prosperity. We have to be conservative with, and we have to remember that we are dealing with the taxpayers' dollars. It's not our money that we can just hand out to people. We've got to be mindful that we are stewards of the taxpayers' dollars, and we can't just, we've got to balance it. And I agree with, with Councilman Thies that it, this is a unique situation, and I would love to say that come January, February, we get the Baker-Tilly study back, we see where we're supposed to be, and then maybe we look at doing something different with the salaries.
Councilman Thacker?
Yes, thank you. And I do, I do appreciate the time and effort that the Budget Committee has put forth in this, and as I said, last year I sat on the Budget Committee, just to have a budget that we recommended devastated, and we didn't get anything, we didn't get the issues that we wanted, as the, the three Budget Committees members all voted for a budget that didn't pass last year. And so instead we did a stipend, which I was not in favor of. I'm on this, I got on this county council to try to help the working people of Vigo County, and that's who I'm trying to represent for this. We're all taxpayers. Yes, that money comes from, we got $21 million in reserves. We're looking to tap in 850,000. I say we have to do it to help our, to keep our employees that are working, keep them working for the county. You know how I'm gonna vote on this, and I, you don't, I don't have to tell you I care about you. I'm gonna show you.
Oh, yeah. Councilman Norris? Councilman Thompson?
Yes, Calissa.
Um, I understand that the motion was to increase, uh, the compensation rate by 4%, and that's reflected on page 22, but I think we also need to address the other amendments, to make sure that we're all on the same page. So, that would be at the bottom of 22, change that to 4%.
Mm-hmm, yeah. That's it.
Page 24, you need to address that in I. Need to address it in A and B, and paragraph L. And A and N. And B, and C, and D, and E. And then every page between, all pages, 28 to 44.
Correct. That would be, that would be as the motion, if this amendment passed, then we'd have to address all those issues and vote on the motion as amended.
Yeah.
Those would need to be included in amendment. I mean, you can, you can state all the numbers that are based on 2.5%, that may be reflected at 4.
Yeah.
I don't want you to list everyone, but just for the record.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yep.
Does the, the advertised budget amount initially, does it allow for this? We haven't surpassed that?
No, we haven't.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Well, let me state, I know it does not in the general fund. And I seriously doubt it, it doesn't, any of the other ones with payroll.
Did we account for, when we did the advertised amount, we counted for what?
10%.
10%. Which isn't happening.
Yes, it was, it's already been accounted.
Right, and that's what she said.
So, Mr. Effner?
Yeah. I was going to say the same thing, that, as I understand, based upon the budget that was passed, that there will be a requirement if, if we increase the salaries, that we will also need to amend the, the budget that was passed last month. Now, uh, one of the ways we can do that is with additional appropriations, and once calendar year 2023 gets here. I also contacted the DLGF, uh, the Director of, of the Budget Division of the DLGF, and spoke with him. There are a couple other alternatives that are somewhat problematic, but one is to start the process over, and that would require us to advertise the revised budget in regard to hearing through Gateway, and that would be half, have to be done by tomorrow. That might be difficult. We would, okay. You know, we'd have to notify DLGF about that. We would have to have a hearing by October 21st, and we would have to pass a revised budget by November 1st. So, uh, there's no flexibility there, and, and I say it'd be at least difficult. I think Calissa thinks that would probably be impossible to get all those numbers together and get it done, and compiled and, and loaded into Gateway by tomorrow. There's also another alternative, as I understand, based upon my conversation, is that, uh, based on what they have to say, and, and they regulate this, assuming that it does not affect the levies that have already been passed, and it's within the advertised budget for salaries, which I believe is the case, um, you could contact DLGF and in coordination with them, schedule a new adoption meeting to adopt a revised budget. That, that would have to be done by November 1st as well. So, there are alternatives, you know, I, I'm not sure which one you want to go with, but, you know, there's always, as we said last week, that we can do the additional appropriations in 2023 at that point in time. You know, that's, that may, I can't tell you which is the best way. You know, that does, you know, I, I suppose it's possible that the council may not surprise of all the same people, so that, that could provide a challenge at that point in time. I don't know.
Everyone clear on that?
Well, I will take option one off the table. I think that sounds like a nightmare. Yeah. The one where you, like, that's impossible. Yeah. By tomorrow. No, we won't do that.
Let's get through this, and then we'll worry about the rest of it. Maybe all for not, we'll see.
That's true. Good point, President.
Anyone else like to speak? I would just like to reiterate, I, I appreciate the efforts of the three on the Budget Committee. I know there's a lot of time spent, a lot of tough decisions made, a lot of heartache and angst, and it was very difficult. I know you guys didn't always agree on things and butted heads, but you came together and put a product together you thought was fair and appropriate. Um, so I do appreciate that. It's a lot of work during those summer months, and you can be doing other things. So, again, I truly appreciate it. You know, it's, we all know what times are like right now. I mean, somebody, I think, Vicki, you talked about buying groceries. I don't know what that feels like more than most. I got seven mouths in the house to feed, so it is tough. But, um, yeah, it is, I mean, this is something, this is my sixth year on the council, this is something I don't think we would ever, ever considered in the past. Once it was done, it was done, and here we are. You know, I think, you know, if this goes through, we have to be very mindful of what that means moving forward, right? And make sure that we don't overextend. And I, I've always been from the firm belief that, you know, working in government myself, that many of us would rather get paid more with less help. And that may be a situation we get into, not laying people off, but also not filling spots if it gets tight. I know there's some, some departments, and one in particular that's in here right now, has really seen that hit years ago, and you never, were made whole. But those are things to be considered for another day, I suppose, but that's something that the future council's gonna have to be mindful of, right? I mean, that's a very fine line you have to, you have to walk if you're gonna do these things. What is adverse impact later? You know, we've all, we've talked about this Baker-Tilly thing. We're all sick of talking about it, but I, I would presume that once it comes back, whatever that looks like, we're probably gonna be in a position where salaries go up anyway, quite frankly. I don't imagine there's gonna be many that go, they're gonna recommend to go down. Maybe some are right-sized right now, but I'd say a lot of them are probably going to go up. And is that a half a percent? Is that 2%? Who knows? But we're probably gonna have to get there at some point anyway. This is a tough situation for everybody. I know it's, uh, a lot of exhausted-looking faces right now, as I look around the, the council, but here we are, right? So, and again, people need help now, you know? Three or four months waiting for Baker-Tilly's not gonna get it done, right? So, if there's no additional questions or comments from council, go ahead and take a vote.
Do we need to restate the motion to reflect that we, we have to save?
All.
All it, all the 2.5% up to 4?
I think maybe we do this first. Is that okay, Mr. Effner, then go back and clean everything else up?
Well, I think...
If this passes?
You can do it that way.
Whatever.
But, or you can amend your amendment to indicate that you, uh, vote to amend to a 4% increase and, and to make the, uh, other changes required to, so that the ordinance and the attachments reflect that.
Whatever your pleasure is.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that we, um, raise the pay rate, uh, that all, all of the 2.5% pay increase be raised to 4% on, from pages 22 through 44, in the salary ordinance.
So? So that's an amendment to your initial motion, correct?
My previous amendment, yes.
I think you can amend your own.
Thank you.
So Councilwoman Wager has amended her original motion, and Councilman Thacker has seconded it. Is everyone clear on that? Any questions before vote? Ask for roll call vote, please. Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Thies?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Nay.
Ms. Wilson?
I'm gonna make a statement while I'm doing this, because I'm gonna maintain the integrity of the Budget Committee and the work that we put into the budget, and I'm gonna maintain the integrity of the council who voted to adopt that budget. I'm gonna also reiterate that I am a steward of the taxpayers' dollars, of which all of you are taxpayers too. So I have to, I have to balance this and say, I'm going to do my very best to spend your tax dollars wisely, and at this point in time, with inflation the way that it is, and with, um, all of the unknowns out there, I think we need to maintain our surplus. That was proven with the election board. If the clerk had not had a, a surplus in his budget to be able to move the line items around, to be able to, to deal with the emergency situation that came up with the election board, where, that's where we would, we wouldn't have that money to do that. And we need to maintain the, um, the surplus that we have, because we don't know what the future holds. So with that, I'm gonna vote nay.
Mr. Thompson?
Nay.
Mr. Lautermaut?
Aye.
Councilman Norris? Can I make a statement?
Absolutely.
To all the employees of the county, who probably dislike them, because I said nay. And I didn't make any statements before. I don't think the 4% is enough for what you guys do. I don't think that, as I flip through these figures and I look at the hourly figures, I look at the salaries, I don't think it's enough. You can go make $20 an hour to McDonald's, and you're doing a more important job. However, we're over budget, and I have to take that into consideration. So what I ask for the, for the department heads is that, moving forward, that you make the cuts that you need to make next year to get the budget in line, and I know that you all will do that. Because the last thing we want to see, or the last thing I want to see, is five years down the road, three of the guys from the Highway Department are gone, two of the people from the Clerks Department are gone. I think that everybody deserves to have a fair pay rate, like Vicki said. You know, with 7% inflation, Aaron reiterated, groceries are expensive, housing's expensive. I mean, looking at Pastor Malone in his statement. Everybody needs help now. And so the only reason that I say no is just because I want to make sure that we can get everything in line. So moving forward, I just ask, and that goes all the way down to the employees, you know, look at the things that you can cut next year, when your department heads looks at you and ask for, you know, what we need or what you don't need, you know, help them make those cuts to make sure everything lines up. So. That's all I have.
Thank you. Moving on, ordinance adopting County of Vigo, Indiana's salary schedule and compensation policies of merit officers, ROC. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I apologize, I gotta handle myself here. They were, yeah, I were calling for you back there. Sorry. You gonna make a motion, Todd?
Yeah, no, just, just that they're, what they're stating is that we amended the amendment, now we have to vote on the amendment. So we need to have another vote. Yeah, so, I mean, it's already out there. Once it passed, then just automatically, I can go ahead and call for questions, so we can go ahead and move to it. That stops all discussion, if that's okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okay. So we're ready, we're ready to vote on it.
Make your motion.
You just called for a question.
Call for question. If I call for question, then we go right to the vote.
Okay, call the roll.
So just, all you have to do now is just vote, now we're voting on the motion, amendment to the amendment passed, so now we have to vote on the amendment to the salary ordinance, if I understand. Right?
That's procedure.
We'll vote on the salary ordinance as amended.
The salary voted as amended, yeah.
Call the roll.
Just call the roll.
So I think Mr. Effner likes that, he likes that motion, it's cleaner for him. So if we could vote on the salary ordinance as amended.
Clean it up.
That'd be great. Is that okay?
Yes, absolutely.
Is that your motion, Todd?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make an emotion, if it makes everybody happy.
Want me to second it?
Yes.
Second.
So we have a motion on the floor by Councilman Thacker, second by Councilman Wager.
Call the roll.
Any questions?
Now we, now he's got to call the roll.
Yes.
Call the roll.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Loudermilk?
Aye. Motion carries.
Okay.
Good.
Now the salary ordinance.
Now moving on.
That's it.
Okay, now we go to merit. You good? Ordinance adopting County of Vigo, Indiana's salary schedule and compensation policies of merit officers, ROC 2022-44. Are we doing that?
No, what do we do on this?
We have to do this. You have to do it.
See, you're not big dick guy, and they're all being different.
It's on page 45.
Yeah, 45.
Starts on page 45, right?
Yeah. But they get paid, and that's why they have to do that. Yeah, 2.5.
So the floor is open for discussion?
And we want to raise that.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Since we did the 4% for the general employees, I'm going to make a motion that we amend this to 4% for merit officers also.
I will second that motion.
And would that be similar to what we did previously for?
Yeah, make sure you're going to say all the, all the.
The pages 45 through 54?
Sure, yep, that's what I'm saying.
Same, same thing right here.
Pages 53 through 54.
So the motion is to amend from 2.5 to 4% for the?
Pages 45 through 54.
Merit officers, and the information contains, all the information regarding 2.5% to 4%, pages 45 to 54.
Right.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Wilson, a second by Councilwoman Wager. All right? Any questions or comments? Ask for roll call vote, please.
Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Loudermilk?
Aye. Motion carries. So we need to have a motion to approve?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve as amended.
Second.
Okay. I'll leave it finished, I guess.
So motion by Councilwoman Wilson to approve as amended, second by Councilwoman Wager. Any questions from council? Have any on? Ask for roll call vote, please.
Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Loudermilk?
Aye. Motion carries, thank you. Now I'll have ordinance adopting County of Vigo, Indiana's salary schedule and compensation policies of elected officials, ROC 20.2-45. Off of this time, for discussion.
Yeah, and since we had done it for the other two, I would make a motion on page 55, where it says 2.5%, that we adopt it as 4% as well for elected officials.
Oh, I see. On page 55.
And that would be for information contained on pages 55 through 58, maybe?
50, I think it's just 56, I believe, is it? Am I wrong? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, 58, yes, 55 through 58. I didn't look past that.
Okay.
Roll call.
Really good stuff, man, oh man. Okay.
So a motion on the floor, was there a second?
Second. There was, we can second it.
Sorry, missed it. Motion on the floor by Councilman Thacker, second by Councilman Wager. Any questions or comments from council before we vote? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
With the economic times the way that they are right now, I don't feel comfortable voting for myself a raise, so I'm going to abstain.
Mr. Thompson?
Nay.
Mr. Loudermilk?
Nay.
She abstained. She didn't say it, that's what she meant.
Motion carries.
She, she could have just.
Okay.
Moving on, ordinance relating to appropriations.
You got to vote on the.
Vote on the.
I'm sorry, I keep getting ahead of myself. Yes, we do. We need to vote on the amended action.
Make a motion, we, make a motion, we vote on the amended salary ordinance for elected officials.
Second.
Motion on the floor to approve by Councilman Thacker, second by Councilman Wager.
Comment, please.
Yes.
And regard this as not for ourselves, but for future people, future folks who may serve. We need to get the salaries up, so somebody will run against us, for God's sake. Okay? That's all I got to say.
Any other comments?
Having none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
I'm staying.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Loudermilk?
Aye. Motion carries. Now we can move on to ordinances relating to appropriations. First, we have additional appropriation, 2022-32, ROC 2022-42, Guardian, Adelaide, payroll salary.
Okay.
My sister's.
Good evening, distinguished councilmen.
Good evening. Mrs. Chisina spoke to us last week, and I'm sure she's happy to answer any questions that we may have of her. Okay.
Since my time with you last week, our number says went up to 1,013 children currently in our program.
What was that last week?
We were right at 1,000.
Just lower, yes.
I would really like to encourage anyone who's worked with Glenna, or all of us on the council, to reach out to our state lawmakers as well, since a lot of her funding comes from the state. We know that they have a very large surplus, and to see cuts continue to be made is really disheartening. At the same time, you know, we've got to support these kids in our communities and these families. So I think we can do our part as well, reaching out beyond our borders and talking to a few people, because it's not, I guarantee it's not just Vigo County, it's across the state. And I know Glenna knows that as well, some probably are even struggling worse than we are, so.
Especially with the state having a $3 billion surplus.
I brought with me tonight some faces of my program, they're back there with me. This is just a sheer small sample of the people that are with me. I have Brittany Caldero in the back, she is my volunteer coordinator, she sees all, oversees all of my volunteers, and she oversees approximately 180 children. Sitting next to her is Diana Fag, she is the person whose position that I'm asking you to dissolve the administrative and put the staff cost position in her place. This woman sees 183 children a month. She does it every week, we call her our unicorn, because what a volunteer does in one month, she does with all of her cases in one week. Sitting next to her is Brittany Smith, she is the court liaison and staff cost supervisor. She oversees four staff members who hold over 192 children. Sitting next to her is Michelle, Michelle Davis, I'm sorry, my brain skipped on me. And sitting next to her is Edie Hollis. This is my assessment intake specialist team. These two members of my staff take every case that comes into our, into our program, every single case, they take it first. They're my frontline staff members. They hold them up to 90 days, but right now, currently with our staffing conditions, they're holding cases anywhere from six months to a year, sometimes even going into termination, because we are that, we're that strapped. But those two ladies right there, they take everything that walks through the door. And I'm just proud of them. And I'll reiterate, I'm humbled and admired by these women, plus all my volunteers, every single day, of what they do for the children in our community.
Questions or comments we have, council?
Ready for a motion?
So what you have here, this is to the end of the year, correct?
Yes, this is the, due to the two positions that were supposed to be converting positions that were, that you had voted for favorably for the VOCA grant, by not getting those positions, I need this funding, because the original appropriation that I was asking for was to cover the two full-time positions. Our agreement, a gentleman's agreement, was that I was to pay for the two full-time positions for the remainder of the year, I was given that quote, what I needed to turn in for benefits and everything till the end of the year, and then the council was going to pick it up in 2023, and then the new budget. So that was part of showing VOCA, the federal funding, that they, the county was going to absorb that into sustainability, so that we wouldn't get cut even worse. However, by that not happening, and those two positions not being converted into the county budget, and losing that, for me to maintain the staff that I currently have right now, I have to take that 6,000 for the part-time people that I have, and so I can keep them till the end of the year. Then come next year, the money that I have sitting in my cash balance, that is around 156,000, I need to take that money to offset the $94,000 deficit that I currently have, just to sustain the current staff that I have. But I'm still going to lose two positions. However, we've condensed and we've restructured, so that we have it, because we've lost those two positions. Because I'm, I have no operating expenses, because all my, all of my funds come from grant funds. So I have to take my cash balance that's sitting there right now, I have to make sure I do all the cuts this year, so that I have remaining balances, so that I can offset that 94,000, and I can keep the people that I have. But they'll all be part-time, no one will be full-time.
So what does this request get you? Just so we're clear?
It gets me my part-time people till the end of the year.
Two? Or how many is that?
It's one.
One?
I've already lost another position.
Right, so I just want to make sure we're clear on what, what this covers.
Yep.
So this request with the payroll, Social Security, FICA, per, and insurance?
Yep, well, there's no insurance, they're part-time.
So?
It's just FICA, Social Security, and their salary. Because see, another thing with my staff members, my staff members make $13 to $15 an hour. Again, they can.
So actually, this request would be less than what you're asking for?
Right. The original, the original request was for $30,000, $2,000, $30,296. That was for those two positions, that was for insurance benefits and all that stuff. But because those two positions did not get voted into and get approved, now I have to step back, and the money that I'm asking for now, the $6,119, is just to maintain my part-time staff member, that's a staff cost till the end of the year.
So 6119 would cover that one?
Person.
Person for payroll salaries, Social Security, FICA.
Yep. Because I've already made structural cuts this year, so that I can have more money sitting there next year.
You have the exact figure before you of what payroll salary would be?
Four.
For that one person?
$6,119.
I just need the $6,119.
Well, it's 5,684.
It's for a staff cost of 29 hours.
That's what he was trying to get at, right there.
Yeah. That's the remainder pay to get them through the, till the end of the year.
So the payroll salaries would be $5,684.
Right.
Social Security and FICA would be $435, for a total of 6119.
Right.
Councilwoman Wilson?
Do we need to amend this appropriation ordinance before we can? Okay, I'd like to, I'd like, can I do that? Okay, I'd like to, I'd like to, might do that? Yes. Um, okay, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the additional appropriation ordinance 2022-32, to reflect the payroll salary of 5,684, FICA 435, for a total of $6,119.
So there's a motion to amend ordinance 2022-32, stated by Councilwoman Wilson?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Thacker. Any questions or comments from council? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Ms. Stees?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermaul?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we need to vote on the amended?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the amended ordinance for additional appropriation, 22-20, 32, sorry.
So a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Wilson, second by Councilwoman Thacker. Any questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Ms. Stees?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermaul?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have two items that are connected, essentially. Uh, the first is salary ordinance 2022-18, ROC 2022-42, Juvenile Port, requests us to delete full-time administrative assistant. So Glenna spoke about that last week as well. If there's any questions, I'm sure she's happy to answer those.
And again, this is just deleting the job description and replacing it with another, it's not actually deleting the position.
So if you, it's the same classification, if you look onto the next page, salary ordinance 2022-19, and you're going from full-time administrative assistant to request a full-time staff casa.
Motion.
Any questions?
Motion to approve salary ordinance 2022-18.
I will second it.
So the motion on the floor from Councilwoman Wager is to approve the request to delete that title, second by Councilwoman Stees. Any questions, comments? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Ms. Stees?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermaul?
Aye.
Motion carries. And the follow-up to that, salary ordinance 2022-19, ROC 2022-42, Juvenile Port, add full-time staff casa. Again, it is the same classification as the just deleted admin assistant.
I'll make a motion to approve salary ordinance 2022-19.
Second.
Motion on the floor to approve by Councilwoman Stees, second by Councilwoman Wager. Any questions or comments before roll call vote? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Thacker?
Aye.
Ms. Wager?
Aye.
Ms. Stees?
Aye.
Mr. Norris?
Aye.
Ms. Wilson?
Aye.
Mr. Thompson?
Aye.
Mr. Lautermaul?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, appreciate it, Tom. Honorary resolutions, there are none. Resolutions relating to fiscal policies of the council, there are none. There are no appointments with that.
One question first?
I'm sorry, yes.
One question?
Yes.
So back to amending the salary ordinances, you will have new documents to sign at the November meeting, with all the amendments made, but it's my suggestion that you wait until 2023 to make the appropriations.
Yeah.
The reason being, one, you're looking at deadlines that may be hard to hit, and two, you do not have a meeting room available to you.
Yeah.
You do not have your own meeting room available. You're homeless.
I think it's not any, it's not different than what we did last year.
It's very similar.
No, it's not, but what I'm saying is I would recommend waiting till 2023 instead of last year. Yeah.
Is everyone clear on what we're?
So we'll sign in November, appropriate in January.
Well, we can.
We meet here.
You can actually appropriate at any point during the year, before you run out of appropriation. And that way, I guess, maybe a benefit to appropriate later in the year is if you do get your Baker Dilly.
Oh, then.
You could possibly incorporate that instead of making massive changes twice.
Got it.
So sunshine here.
Yeah, because it's a lecture.
Here and then lecture, we're on Wednesday.
Wednesday, it is Wednesday, November 9th, I believe, and we're back home.
Back home. So just so everybody's clear, next meeting, November 1st, will be here, and then the voting meeting will be on a Wednesday, November 9th, at the annex.
If there is an annex.
All right, with that, entertaining motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion on the floor by Councilwoman Thacker, second by Councilwoman Wager, all of the favor seen by by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote opposed, adjourned.
I gotta go grab one, I guess I need to go hang out.